Dave, can you see this?
Yes.
Good. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for coming tonight. It is Wednesday, May fifteenth, for the City of Kingsburg Regular City Council Meeting. We'll start off tonight with the invocation given by Pastor Malcolm Light of the Orchard Bible Fellowship Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand.
Well, let's pray together. Our Father and our God, we thank you for the day that you have given to us today, the things that we have been able to accomplish. Look forward to the things that we will be able to accomplish this evening at this meeting. I'm reminded, Father, of your word in Psalm one twenty-one. It says to us, "I lift up my eyes to the hills; from where does my help come?" My help comes from the Lord, who made heaven and earth. Father, I find that to be a good reminder to us that you are ever-present as a help to us, whether it be a help in our personal lives, our families, our work-life, or even a help present to us as we are seeking to make a community the best that it can be. We thank you for Kingsburg. We thank you for the great gifts that we have of this community. Father, I ask your blessing not only over tonight, but also over our Swedish Festival that's coming this weekend. Father, may you indeed be glorified and praised in all things. Would you give wisdom to our council, wisdom to our community, as they come and speak tonight? We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
The microphone's on.
Present. Here.
Here. Thank you. Item two is to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item three, the presentations, we have listed as none. So for item four, we will move to public comment. Public comment is a time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed per each speaker. So do we have anybody from the public that would like to come up and talk? Come on up.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. If you could just come up and state your name and whether or not you're a resident of the City of Kingsburg. And I'm going to give the reminder that for public comment, we can sit here and listen. We just can't give a lot of feedback, even though we want to. We can give some direction to staff and stuff. We just can't have a banter back and forth outside of what's on the agenda.
She can.
She sure can.
My name is Glenna Finsky, and I am a resident of Kingsburg.
And Jeff Finsky, resident.
Thanks for coming.
We moved here about eight years ago. We're both from the general area, but moved into town about eight years ago. Love our little city. We think it's great. We love the camaraderie. The downtown is perfect. We just seem to have a little problem with speeders in this town, and I think it's probably all over. I think the world we live in now, everyone's in a big hurry. And if they should have left ten minutes ago, they leave this minute, you know, to get there. So we understand that. But they're really speeding really fast down some of the streets. We live on Tenth Avenue, down from Roosevelt, across from CAPS. And that seems to be a shortcut. A lot of people from downtown take the little shortcut there by CAPS, go on Tenth, curves to Orange and out to Sixth Avenue. And they use that as a speedway on their lunch hour or different times to get from downtown to McDonald's or Taco Bell or something. So we're just concerned about that and feel that there's a lack of policemen giving tickets or stopping people. And we did talk to an officer that said that there is no... He doesn't know what the speed limit is there because there are no signs there. There is a speed limit sign on Tenth about Warrentine, so it's about four blocks or so south of us coming into town from the south. And then there are none. But that one is thirty-five, which we would hope it would be less than thirty-five, but we would be happy with thirty-five. They go pretty fast through there. So we would really like if they could put some more speed limit signs around town. Maybe, I don't know how expensive that would be, but it would be great if there could be some signs that that way the police officers would know what the speed limit is, and they could at least give warnings or stop people or give tickets or whatever. That it seems like our people on the honor system are not always honorable, and they might need consequences like a ticket to slow them down. And it seems like this town is getting to be more pedestrian, electric carts, golf carts, bikes, skateboards, all kinds of people are in the streets now. And it's just dangerous when people are going forty-five, fifty miles an hour down our roads. So that would be something that I'm requesting. Okay?
Okay.
That's all for me.
I had a great conversation with the chief. I'm going to continue that. We're going to meet down there at the station, so see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you. I can assure you that there is a speed limit there. I'd be surprised if it's not twenty-five, maybe thirty-five.
It's twenty-five just north of the house, assigned there.
So, yeah, if you're in touch with the chief, and then just come back and let us know if you don't see resolution.
Yeah. Yeah. That was great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anyone else from the public? Sure. Come on up, sir.
My name is Ron Shipman, and I live over at Lindquist and Twentieth. Lindquist being one of the streets that was turned into a thoroughfare from the residential street for the new subdivision. So we get an awful lot of traffic. I spoke to Chief DeDadian about this, I'm saying, four years ago. I don't know. It's about when the subdivision started getting populated. And he understood my concerns. He didn't really answer me, to tell you the truth, but I think he implied that he had a lack of personnel to patrol the street. Anyway, coming up to the present date, we have people going up and down Lindquist, and I'm not exaggerating. I just didn't have an instrument to measure it. I want to say fifty miles an hour, quite regularly. Forty and thirty is very common. Now, the people going on the side streets are learning that they're getting by with this, so they're doing the same thing. And from our kitchen window, you actually shriek, seeing the close calls on that intersection. It is scary. And my biggest concern, I mean, it's going to happen. It's not a matter of if, it's when. I am just amazed it hasn't happened yet. We have seen ones that just missed fenders. I just wonder who in this town wants to go to the family that's left after somebody gets wiped out, when we could prevent it right now with a little bit of patrolling. In my mind, I hate a ticket from an officer. I don't think anybody in this room likes to get a ticket. I don't care what the situation is, even if you know you're wrong. You don't want that ticket. I think a surge of tickets and, no, I don't want to say a surge, a little intermittent patrolling of that street and tag a few people, the word will get out very rapidly. The chief did help me with the loud boom-boo music way back when. The people moved in this town and thought they could play it at any volume. And our pictures in the house was actually shaking on the wall. And he did accomplish that. I don't know. He told me he was going to go out and talk to a few people. What he did, I don't know, but it worked. So, I mean, these other avenues can work too. So I would appreciate if something happened to help this out. I moved down to Kingsburg because I thought it was a much better place, and it has turned into what I left up in the Clovis Fresno area. Between the boom-boo music, the speeding, and as Glenna mentioned, the little carts, scooters, kids on the street, I mean, I don't mind kids on the street, don't get me wrong, but with the speeding, it is very dangerous. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Shipman, just real quick. I just want to confirm. The intersection you're talking about is Lindquist and Twentieth?
I can't hardly hear.
The intersection you're talking about, Lindquist and Twentieth, just north of the school?
Lindquist and Twentieth is where I see all this.
Okay.
I mean, they're going up and down Lindquist. And this is not all. I'm not blaming it all on the new development. I don't want to misunderstand. A lot of it is coming from there. But as you probably know, Twenty-Second Street was tied into that Lindquist. So, I mean, there's people coming from the old Kingsburg, if you will, and traveling that street. I've got friends that tell me they go that way now instead of going up to Sierra. So, I mean, you know, it's any and everybody, the speeding, that's all it is. It don't matter where they come from.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we have any other members from the public that would like to come up and address council? Okay. Seeing none, we will close public comment and move to item five, which is the consent calendar. These are items considered routine in nature, are to be placed on the consent calendar. Each will be considered as one item and voted in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action item listed. Approval of the consent calendar includes items, recital readings, ordinances by titles only, and adoption of recommended actions contained in staff reports. Do we have any members from council that would like to pull a consent item tonight? Five point three. Do we have any other items we'd like to have pulled?
Five point seven.
Seven. Anyone else on council? Is there any members from the staff or from public that would like to pull any consent calendar items? Okay. With the exception of five point three and five point seven, we'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will pull five, three, and five, seven. Yeah, we'll start with five, three.
I just wanted to ask Chief Benaski about five point three. I know that this request had come to council previously from our former chief when he was going to the healthcare district to ask for grants. This was not something that was brought to us. I know that Councilmember Silva and I were at the meeting when he did present on this, and it sounded like it was really for teaching kids about fire safety and maybe at festivals. I just wanted to make sure that this is something that you, now, as the chief, thought that was a good idea.
There's absolutely value to it. So we got the trailer from Fresno Fire after they used it for many, many years, and it was pretty beat up and stuff. So we've painted it, we fixed it, but, you know, I kind of inherited this project from the previous fire chief. And I actually tried, and I think the mayor was there. I think Councilmember Silva left already, or maybe he was there. I tried to get the money back to make sure that the hospital district was a hundred percent committed to it, since I know there was a little bit of, you know, who needed the authorize at first. They are still committed to it. We're still committed to it. It just now takes us the responsibility to, and the cost, to have overtime or the people, the ability to staff it, to be able to use it. And that's really where kind of the difference comes, is it's great to have it. Here we are, but we also then need the funding to take it to the school events and pieces like that. And we use off-duty staff to do that, and our SER program people to be able to staff that unit or trailer of where it comes from. But that is our intent. We plan on using it. We plan on doing it. It's just a matter of, I think there was some unrealistic timeframes that were given with that and a little lack of process of the aspect that the money needs to come here. It has to be accepted by you. I need a budget line item, the money put in the budget to be able to spend it. It's not like I can do that without the process. So that's the other part that I think kind of got misunderstood with the hospital district and us and the fact we weren't going to be able to have this ready to go because somehow there was for the wellness weekend that Saturday. So there was absolutely no way. We obviously aren't going to have it for the Swedish Festival, but we anticipate it'll take us sixty and ninety days minimum to get it striped, get the items and those people, you know, items going. But we are committed and think it's a good tool.
Have you communicated that with the healthcare district? Because I, we want to be good stewards of their money and make sure that it's like a reasonable timeline and something that you really want.
That's what I did with them at the meeting before this one, the meeting before, not the SCRAM one, but the one before it. I offered to give it back if their intention was for it to be there. So I believe we're in good relationship with them, and they know exactly the timeframe of where it was. And I said, "If you gave it to us for this, there's no way I'm going to meet that timeframe, so please let us give it back to you." Before we put on this agenda item to go forward, and they were like, "No, we're good. We understand how the process works and how it has to work." You're welcome.
I can speak to, I was at that meeting when Chief Benaski, it seems like there was a little bit of a procedural misalignment prior to his arrival, and he was very, very clear with the hospital district. We're incredibly grateful of all of it, but he made sure that we're all on the same page now. So, Chief, I do appreciate you kind of getting ahead on that one for us.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Any other council discussion? If not, we can entertain a motion specifically for five point three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item passes. We'll now move to five point seven. Councilmember Smith.
So what, okay, so were these expenses that we paid for by the hour? It notes in here that there were about five hundred and thirty-six hours. I mean, is, so is this just a contract to kind of?
Yeah. So the contract currently covers different things, right? So it covers actual licensing, network security, internet, voice-over IP, which is our phones, and our public safety camera system. So the five hundred and thirty-six hours is related to calls for service that we have, mostly for managed support. So to give an example, if you're at your computer and something's not working right and you need IT service, you're calling them for that. That's the portion of, if you look at the actual contract, that's covered under, I think it's referenced as managed services. So they had five hundred and thirty-six hours in one year of citywide service that they were attending to, right? So if the police department calls for something, if we call for something, if the fire department calls for something. So, no, we are not billing that hourly. We're paying sort of a, we're paying a monthly fee, and if we use more than that, it's covered under that amount. So it's a, it covers all service calls that we have. For that portion of the contract, this is, I mean, they're providing different services, but that, the reference in the staff report is based upon, you know, calls for service for actual IT issues that we have, or if we have a new employee, right, that needs a new computer setup. It just kind of depends upon which department and what their needs are. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Do we have any public comment on item five point seven? If not, is there any other council discussion on five point seven? Okay, seeing none, we will entertain motions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five point seven carries. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our regular calendar with item six point one, the one percent public safety sales tax, Measure E overview. This is presented by Police Chief Neil DeDian and Fire Chief John Benaski. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good to be with you again. So I'll give you a rundown of what we presented to the Measure E Oversight Committee yesterday. First, start with the spending plan that we're currently on, twenty-three, twenty-four, and then some of the major projects that we've accomplished. Remodel police station, that work is completed. Emergency operations plan, that work has been completed. Police Department share of that. Body worn and dash-mounted cameras, that's over a five-year period. We are wrapping up the first year. This first year's included training, retrofitting of the vests or shirts to accommodate the camera, and just had our cameras installed inside the vehicles. So we're pretty happy with that. And then the subscription covers equipment, maintenance, and other things over the remaining four years. We were also able to purchase some Motorola APX eight thousand dual-band radios with wireless microphones. That purchase has been complete. We're now P-25 compliant. We're basically, we have the same equipment that the sheriff's office has, so that when they adapt to something, we can adapt with them. If they evolve, change, something happens, we're right there with them. So happy about that one. We've also purchased some management software that will assist in our productivity. Some of the training that has been provided by Measure E funds, peace officer skills and specialty training, which is ongoing, that's every year, and continues throughout the year. Individual and assignment, individual assignment and investigative training, also ongoing technical investigative conferences. We've sent some people to some conferences that we probably could not have done because none of that stuff is reimbursable. But Measure E has helped with that. Some supervisory and leadership conferences, women leadership conferences. I know the council is aware that one of my focuses is to hire more female officers, and then give them the tools in law enforcement. And I believe these conferences are of great value to do that. So Measure E allows for that. And then new laws, regulation that pops up, which is kind of, you know, fair amount of that in this state, believe it or not. So we have a lot of that, so we have to keep up on that. Some other training we have, just some really technical things, tactical breacher, building searches, arrest and control update, jujitsu instructors. So I have a couple of my folks that are instructors in that. And this is another tool that we have for our people when they have to go hands-on with someone, that they have the skills, ability, and tools to overcome any resistance, minimal amount of force, after we've applied some de-escalation. Digital evidence recovery, that's extremely important these days. Pistol optics instructor, armor, surveillance fundamentals, interviewing school-aged children, homeless issues, and then sending our school resource officers to appropriate training. Thanks, Abby. We have some more, just some other things continued on, supervisory training, the Women's Conference, Women Leadership in Law Enforcement, other leadership training available as it comes up, and opportunities there. Personnel-wise, this year, we are funding basically ten positions, point-two-five percent of my salary, two police lieutenants, one police sergeant, six police officers, and one police services technician. Ten full-time bodies with Measure E, one part-time. And then, you know, with general funds and third-party funds, our contracts, the adult compliance team, that brought us to twenty-seven sworn, four professional staff, thirty-one full-time employees. Next year, our spending plan is one police services technician, twenty-five percent of my salary, two police lieutenants, one police sergeant, five police officers. So we did see a reduction in funds from Measure E. We adjusted accordingly because the revenue just won't support. Six police officers, so we moved a vacancy that we had into, I'm sorry, we absorbed a vacancy, moved some personnel around into the general fund, and so we are one-listed police officer, but again, we're very prudent not to get out over our skis, get ahead of ourselves, and overspend. And we still have a good fund balance so that we can take care of any unforeseen needs. So going forward, we'll have those positions and twenty-six sworn for professional staff. Body worn dash cameras, again, second year of the subscription, approximately eighty thousand dollars. Three vehicles that we had a carryover from. A lot of frustration, as you're aware. I probably commented every time I'm before council about getting vehicles out of Ford, but they're starting to trickle out now. We have two that they notified us of that arrived at the dealership up in Folsom, so we're expecting those at some point in the near future. A little over twenty thousand dollars in safety equipment, and that represents a pretty, almost a ten thousand dollar increase. The same stuff we normally buy ballistic vest ammunition helmets, personal protective equipment, firearms, restraints, et cetera. Taser, Axon, who makes taser, has gone to a subscription system. So we used to buy the equipment, and now pretty much we're where we are at. We have a bunch of outdated antiquated equipment that, of course, they don't support. So the business model for Axon now is to go on a subscription system. So we've jumped in on that for every officer so that, basically, they provide the equipment, they provide the cartridges, the training, all of that. And as they evolve their technology and equipment, we get benefit of that. But of course, there's a cost to that as well. But I think that's actually a better model for them and for the consumer so that we can stay on top of this and then we're not stuck with antiquated equipment. We've been in no market or no way to get rid of it, really. Spending plan for training going forward, so about fifty thousand dollars in specialty training, again, some of the same stuff that I've already mentioned, focusing again on some of the supervisory and development conferences, new laws, regulation, things of that nature. And then some of the major budget line items, materials and services that cost us about seventy-six thousand dollars, office supplies, screening of personnel, tools, equipment, communication, vehicle maintenance, fuels, things of that nature. I also want to point out that we do have a contract with both school districts. They pay for the actual police officer salary, the body to fund that, and Measure E covers materials and services. So all of the things that I have listed there, the bullet points, the major stuff, safety equipment, tools, fuel, training and education for both districts. So Measure E is contributing to those school resource officers being out there and available to the schools. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any of your questions.
Yeah, I have, just real quick, Chief, can you drill down on like the training? That's page one oh seven, one oh eight, one oh six. What would that, what would the training picture look like without Measure E? Would all of that be gone? Would part of it be gone? Would only one officer get trained as opposed to all of the officers?
I would probably, I'm just giving you off the fly here. I'd probably juggle my budget in some fashion to save it, to probably fund five or ten thousand dollars max, just by robbing Peter to pay Paul, essentially. I'd take it out of other line items. I'd reduce accordingly, just to get some of that done. I think it's extremely important for me, somebody else may have a different focus, but for me to have my female officers sent to the Women's Leadership Conference, also send them to the, I forget the name of it, but it's a leadership conference in Fresno every year, it's a one-day conference, and I think they get a lot out of that. So I do want to focus on that. The new laws and regulations, I think that's important, certainly for my supervisory staff to do, but to answer your question, I don't know. A good chunk of that would go away. I could probably send maybe one person to the Women's Leadership and Law Enforcement Conference, maybe a handful to Fresno, you know, it's a one-day and it's local. Some of the investigative conferences, probably not.
Okay. Yeah, I think that was... Yeah, I think, I think that was, what I was getting at, I think Measure E has been great for training officers and for doing all the things necessary to keep the citizens safe. So it's a super important component, I feel, to what we are, what you are accomplishing here with your, with your staff and the department. And so I'd hate to see a lot of that training go away because I think it's invaluable too. And so Measure E is a super important component in that, and I just wanted to illustrate that because, you know, Measure E, at some point, we're gonna have to revisit Measure E, and I know it's an important one for fire and police. And so thank you for, for all the training. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Personnel development, huge focus for me, and you only get that from training. You know, using some personal things, reading, you know, watching some videos, things of that nature, relatively inexpensive. And I might go buy some books, and I do buy them books, actually. And I'm building a library at the police department as well. But I bought my supervisors, as an example, bought them a particular book, and then we go through that book. We discuss it at our supervisory meetings, and then we'll find another book to go through. But that's only so much, right? You really have to go out and talk to other people, listen to what the presenters at conferences and other trainings have to say so that you know what's happening in law enforcement. A good example would be the Gracie Jujitsu School that I have a couple of officers who've attended that, and they're keeping up their certification on that. So that is one of the trends in law enforcement that I've noticed, where you're using some more hands-on things to make it a little bit safer for the person being arrested, right? Less kicking and sticking, more hands-on, control holds, things of that nature. But that's pretty sophisticated stuff, so have to have people up, up to speed on that. And that, it's pricey, I'll tell you that, it's pricey. But their safety is worth it, and safety of the public, I think, is worth it as well. But I appreciate your words.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment for chief, for the first chief? Thank you, Chief Thaden.
Thank you.
Chief Benaski.
All right, well, mayor, council, here's the fire department portion of Measure E. Currently, we, we fund three fire captains out of Measure E, one full-time administrative assistant. We have a part-time administrative assistant for nine hundred and like sixty hours. We pay as part of a joint commitment, fifty percent of an account clerk, and PD pays the other fifty percent. And then we, it's around seventeen percent or so of an account clerk, split between Kingsburg Fire, PD and Public Works. We do thirteen thousand five hundred for fire department training, and part of that training that we really have focused on, we've had to change personnel, newer, younger individuals, is is we only have six people on duty per day, so it requires a time people that what we call act up. So if you're a firefighter, you have to be able to act as an engineer, which is drive and operate the fire apparatus. If you're the engineer, you then have to be able to act as the company officer, depending on people on vacation, out of county wildland assignments or things along those lines. So we've really focused on the ability to train everybody for the position above theirs. And then we really worked on the fire prevention series because we were fortunate that Fresno Fire put on, brought out, outside instructors, brought them all to the valley so we didn't have to pay hotel bills to send them to Northern and Southern California to finish up the training for three personnel to get their fire marshal certificate from state fire training. And that's truly the path we follow is through the California State Fire Training. It's very similar to post. We spent thirty thousand dollars for the upcoming strategic plan and, or master plan, strategic plan and master plan. We, at the last council meeting, we entered a contract to start the data GIS portion of that process. And then we did repairs to station one, which was the overhead doors and the ACs that need to be replaced due to end of life. This was the last year of the five-year radio upgrade, so we finally have upgraded all of our radios. We're all kind of using the same Bendix King radios now and has made our radio systems much more reliable and better. Now we're just waiting for the last leg, which is for Cal Fire to, on their state tower up in Blue Mountain, put the Fresno County Fire District one and two on, so improve our overall radio communications, not just for us, but for Selma and Fresno County Fire kind of in the, in the bowl of Selma and Kingsburg that's here, so it's a little bit harder to hear from where we are located right now. We've started the process of the two hundred, or twenty thousand dollars for PPE testing, which is our turnout gear. That's another wonderful federal and state unfunded mandate that said we're gonna follow the NFPA manufacturers recommendations for gear, for our gear and testing and pieces. Well, we don't have a light table, all the pieces to go do that, a vapor barrier tester, so we're gonna spend a lot of money to pay UPS, unfortunately, because our gear is heavy and we have two sets for each person, so one can be washed and cleaned while we have the ability to respond to other calls. And then we have to ship it to Northern or Southern California for it to be inspected, tested, fixed, repaired. And that now has to be done annually. So it is a unfortunate, heavy lift. And then we finished off the last of our self-contained breathing apparatus purchases, the bottles, the rip bags and all of that, and that'll complete our purchase. A lot of that was funded, we grant funded from a AFG grant a couple of years ago, and this finished off that entire process. Now this year, we made a change, so kind of just to give you some fair warning where we are, part of what I was here, I kind of came here with the budget, is is really what I want to do is get personnel aligned to what's fire related. If we didn't have the ambulance, what's really the ambulance? What's the true ambulance cost? What's the fire cost, the staff, the engine with two people per day? And then in turn, what is the amateurization of our capital assets, the fire engines, the ambulance, the gear that goes in on like the life pack monitors for our EKGs, the ability of machine to do CPR more effectively than we can by human and those, and then amateurize that over the lifespan of those pieces? And that's where we kind of moved that into our capital budget. So this year, we have three captains. We've moved the administrative assistant because a lot of what she does is both fire and ambulance. So we're now fifty percent in each one of those two budgets in the three twenty account, and we moved the fire apparatus engineer in that account. And then we still have the part-time administrative assistant to help us, and then the split changes didn't change. So we're really focusing on that Measure E of really what's the direct impact to the citizens, which is the additional bodies on the engine. We have a recurring hundred thousand dollars, and that's based on today's value, if the current rate inflation is running, obviously that hundred thousand won't stay as a hundred thousand, but we're looking at a fire engine the last twenty years. We have to have a primary in the reserve, so in turn, every ten years or so, we have to buy a fire engine. So we have a hundred thousand set aside for a capital outlay account to replace the fire engine instead of having to come and say, we did a million dollars, and council say, well, where am I gonna get it from? We're amateurizing that over the lifespan of a fire engine. We have to continue, we've done some, now we need another fifteen, and that's probably an ongoing cost for that PPE testing from OSHA. And then we did the same for the command vehicles. We put twenty-eight-five for the recurring cost of the two command vehicles over a period of time. And then we went out and tested hose, which we're required to, we haven't done in many years, and we actually found hose from when I was here many, many years ago with dates of nineteen ninety-five, ninety-seven. So we pulled that hose out of service, like we had that on the rack, on the hose rack, and in turn now we have to replace the hose rack because we depleted hose off of that. That's what that purchase is for. And that ends my presentation. Hopefully it was quicker and more to the point that you guys want to see. Any questions?
Do we have any, any council questions for chief?
I have one question. Is the fire department still gonna continue painting fire hydrants, or is that process completed?
What's complete? We've done a portion of it, we still have paint, we still have the ability to do it. What we've done is is we GPSed every hydrant, so we now know where they are, we flowed every hydrant. We just have not had the staff with the ability to go through and go back and paint them all. So we've cracked all the caps, we've made sure they all work, we've lithium greased them, we sealed them all back on, but no, we have not painted all of the hydrants. And truly, it's a laborous process, the way they designed to do it, it's with an airless sprayer, we've got the buckets of paint, and then in turn, so if we get a call, what do we do with the sprayer? It'll dry out, so we really just don't have the, a good system truly in place to make that more efficient of how we're painting the hydrants. But that's, and then, and we made sure the blue dots were down. So we have the blue dots, we've got that, the caps are painted according to the water flow as listed by the National Fire Association or Fire Protection Association. So they're listed by fire flow, they're there, but no, they're not completely all painted. They're not bright pretty yellow.
Chief, in your mind, coming from a different department and coming here, is there an area that you feel like we're missing on where we should be spending some of the Measure E dollars? Is there, is there one area that you go, okay, we should probably be allocating in this area?
No, I think the fire department for, you know, the size, the revenue of the city is, you know, allocated to the same local resources, two person, you see with the cap, the county and other jurisdictions like Dinubon, Selma. It's just really refining where the money's being spent and, you know, kind of what I've been saying is, is we've been doing a lot out here, and I really want us to focus that we're doing this, but we're doing this really, really well. And that's really what my goal of the budget, what I'm trying to focus on in my short period of time here, and making sure that we're doing the best of our abilities. We did make a little change in fire prevention, not everybody was happy with that, but it is part of our contract with Dave Peters for them to do the underground and those pieces, so let's really try to focus on where our contracts are with Jazz for fire prevention, with Peters for the underground, our contract with Dispatch and stuff like that, of just kind of really going back to what we contract for, how that contract works and going through there. But I would say amateurizing the equipment is probably the biggest thing that we don't do well at, and then the fire service unfortunately has really big expensive equipment, and we all know local government budgets go like this, and then it always seems that our stuff breaks or we need to get it replaced when the budget's down here. It never seems it's good, and you can see where it is, and part of the problem with fire engines and even ambulances now is is the manufacturers are very well educated, they're business people, they are where they are. We all kind of depleted our replacement accounts after the last recession in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. So that's what a lot of jurisdictions use to avoid, you know, significant pay cuts or personnel. They had, you know, sums of money in their capital apparatus equipments, they use that to get over the gap. And then in turn, they were just behind on replacements. So even where I came from before, we were behind in replacements from where we were. And because once you kind of get fall behind, it's really hard to get caught back up. And then, so what happens is, is when the ARPA money came, many, many jurisdictions across the United States spent that to fill the void of capital for fleet replacement. So fire engines were taking, are now taking thirty-two to forty-two months to, you pay us and then we're signing the contract and we'll deliver it thirty-two to forty-two months. So that's never been an issue, but they're not, you know, they're not building and adding on a million square feet to the factories because they know it's this kind of one-time money, and it's going to diminish, you know, we will see a dip in the economy somewhere, sometime, so they're not, they're just telling everybody, get in line. And I've never seen an ambulance that's now telling us it's gonna take three years to get an ambulance, so we need to sign a contract, get it, and we won't see it till, you know, late twenty-five, twenty-six at the earliest. Those used to, they were easy, you know, you bought them on a chassis type, a Mercedes or a freightliner chassis, so you didn't have to build them all up, and those used to turn around in less than twelve months, and now they're three years also. So being able to amateurize your expenses, I think, helps instead of having to go look at some alternatives of how to fund those when they come due. And that's, I think, probably one of the biggest things that we could do to prepare for the future, having that as a fixed cost.
Thank you.
Do we have any other council discussion? Do we have any members from the public that would like to ask any, either one of our chiefs anything? Okay, if not, we'll bring it back to council. If there's no more discussion, I believe this is informational only.
Yes, it's informational only right now. The full Measure E budget will be considered by council as part of the full budget. Just one note, also, the both chiefs gave similar presentations last night to the Measure E Citizens Oversight Committee, which is required by the bond measure, and they recommended approval of the budget, so it's part of their, their annual review.
Great. Like we're seeing good things from our Measure E. Hopefully it continues, something we definitely need, so. No action needed on this, so we will move to six point two, the twenty-four, twenty-five draft capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item is also informational, but it's part of the development of our fiscal year twenty-twenty-five overall budget. So included in your report tonight is a review of the current fiscal year and our capital improvement projects and a status update there, but then also includes draft items for the, for the coming year. And for the, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, staff has identified forty projects totaling roughly five point six million dollars from various funding sources. And for comparative purposes, in the current fiscal year, a total of fifty-one projects were identified totaling six point six million. But I will note that some of the projects from this year will carry over into next year, just based upon the timing of their construction and when those will actually be completed and paid out. So the item tonight is for discussion and input. We would note that it's likely this list will still be modified as we continue to work through internal budget meetings and finalize both revenues and expenditures across all departments. We are presenting this draft information to consider public and council input. And again, the final CIP will be considered as part of the full budget adoption in June. We're also discussing proposed street projects for the coming year, the way that we identify streets, we actually usually identify them early in the previous fiscal year, and that's just based upon the timeframe of construction season, which usually occurs in July and August, so it occurs in the next fiscal year, so you have to do a lot of the preparation in the previous fiscal year. So you'll see upcoming here in July, and council's already approved these contracts, has worked for fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth avenues from Stroud to the north to the new Lennar tract, Mariposa Street, which is a CDBG funded project that council approved, and then Draper Street, once waterline improvements are completed, will receive improvements in July of the coming year as well. So I'm happy to go through, I'll just highlight a few of the projects, I won't go through all of them, and I'm certainly happy to answer questions on any of them. I will note that the finance committee also reviewed this list at their last meeting last week. So as interim chief Benaski just mentioned, there is deposit funding for the replacement, the replacement ambulance. We do still have funding available for some of our economic development incentive programs. Have a handful of vehicle replacements, both for the, in the building department and the police department, road improvements that I touched upon. We will be making the actual full payment on the fire engine, the new fire engine that we are expecting to receive in the new fiscal year, so that was ordered, as chief mentioned, I think it was, you know, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, yeah, in, in twenty-twenty-one. So we're expecting to take delivery roughly three years later. There's the Prop sixty-eight state grant to do the full construction improvements on the Laurel Street Dog Park, so that will be going out to bid soon, and that work will happen this summer. There's a handful of water enterprise improvements as well, including new water mains in certain areas to improve fire flows that were identified as part of our water, most recent water modeling, some continued funding for the turf replacement program, so to assist with water conservation, some hydrant replacements that we have. And then we do have funding in here for an updated water rate study, so the last time council or the city raised rates was in two thousand and seventeen. So we want to avoid a situation like we had with the disposal fund where ultimately expenses started to outpace revenues, so we will bring in a third-party consultant to study that fund and make sure that what we're charging is adequately covering our costs to provide that service. And then, again, there are updates to the current fiscal year twenty-twenty-four projects on the next page with the status updates based upon whether they've been completed or under, most of them are in progress that we anticipate to be completed by the end of the fiscal year. But certainly happy to answer any questions that council may have, and individual department heads are also available to provide more detail on particular projects.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? There's a lot on there.
On, on the road repavements, can we use, will there be any products that we can use to help out in the alleys if we're redoing the roads? Can we?
So it's possible that we could use, like, you mean like road grindings, like, like older road grindings that we could put down? Yes. The challenge that we have with a lot of our local transportation funds is that you're not supposed to use them in the alleys because alleys are not considered roadway miles. So you can use either air quality grants for some of them. So, uh, you can use, uh, either, uh, air quality, uh, grants for some of them, or you'd have to use, uh, general fund dollars essentially.
Just when we're fixing the roads?
Yes.
Can we recycle any of that? I mean, or we can't?
Yes, if they're, if they're, if we do like a full, like a mill and there's grindings that we have, then yes, we usually direct the, um, the contractor to put them in alleys that are most needed to fill in potholes or, you know, there's some of our older alleys are more dirt than pavement at this point, so.
Other council questions? Do we have any public comment on this topic? Okay. There's no more council discussion, no public topic. This is informational only, so we will move on to... Move on to item six point three, the City Hall Space Needs Assessment presented by City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, this item was, uh, one of the items that was earmarked in the draft, uh, CIP program, but, um, just to provide some background, uh, Kingsburg City Hall Building is comprised of, uh, three separate spaces. Uh, this includes the main building, uh, which was originally built as a bank in nineteen-thirteen. Uh, this space currently has finance and utility staff, city clerk and city manager's office. Uh, the adjacent space, uh, which is our community development front, also includes administration, finance and support staff. And finally, uh, the building that we're in this evening, uh, which is the council chamber, a conference room and storage. Uh, the city owns the former bank building, uh, the other two buildings are leased. Uh, currently the bill, the buildings are fully occupied with limited options for adding staff. Uh, during the city's most recent strategic planning session, council discussed the need to examine long-term options. Uh, this coincides with the city adopting a development agreement with the landowner for exchange of three acres for future city use. Uh, staff believes that a city hall needs assessment is a logical starting point for determining options, including an existing conditions report, an analysis of existing operations, staff survey, twenty-year population projections and identified needs. This would allow for public input to discuss alternative site options to match community, uh, needs and desires. So staff tonight is recommending that the council, uh, direct staff to develop a request for proposal to solicit interested architecture and engineering firms to provide a bid for services to assess existing building conditions and potential deficiencies related to functionality, assessment of staff needs and recommendations for future needs based upon community input and expectations, as well as current and future public service delivery models. Uh, once developed, the finance committee can provide a final review of the RFP prior to solicitation of proposals. Based upon similar studies done recently, staff anticipates this to cost between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars to complete. And there is an earmark, uh, as I mentioned, in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five capital improvement budget. Both the finance committee and city council would review the proposals once received, uh, including the potential awarding of potential, of contracts for services. Uh, so tonight, uh, we've just included some example templates of a couple of different RFPs that have been drafted, um, recently by other California communities, as well as a draft, um, uh, final report, just to provide some, uh, a review of, of what to anticipate. And, uh, if council gives staff direction tonight, we would obviously modify, uh, the RFP to match, uh, our needs. And then again, bring that back to the finance committee, um, before going out for, for proposals. So that concludes, concludes my report, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions we have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this topic? Okay, seeing none, uh, council discussion?
I have, I guess it would be for us to discuss. Um, if you've walked through any time during the day with our staff working, you know what the results of this are going to say. We don't have, it doesn't make sense. This is not a good space to grow into. And if we're looking at projections over twenty years, I don't know if this is something that we have to do to tick off on a sheet that says that we did it. I would personally rather spend the money on like an architect on the new land and look at doing something out that way. We know the answer here. I don't, I don't know if this is a step that we have to do because we know that this is not good working conditions for our staff. It's not.
I think we'd agree with that. I, I would say the only thing is, I don't think anybody's going to disagree that's walked through there that says we, we need a different space. I think what this is going to do is this is going to tell us, um, from a professional standing, how big of a space, how should, it should be designed. Because I would, I have a hard time going to an architect without somebody telling me exactly what we're going to need based on growth projections. I think that's, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, City Manager, but I think that's what this is, is to really, a third party to come assess and say, hey, you guys need five thousand square feet or ten thousand square feet, somebody that understands it better than us. We're all kind of personally invested in this. Not, I think it's a little bit more defensible for us in the future because this is going to be a big price tag to be able to say, this independent third party came out, said, this is how much space is projected to need, that we're going to need. That way we can go to an architect with, with our needs. I, unless, unless I, unless somebody sees it differently.
It's not coming and saying, this is the space you have, redesign it and work here. That would be for a new space.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. I, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, I, I don't anticipate that they would, I mean, I, we don't own two of the buildings, so, um, and I don't think that it's feasible for us to develop it in such a way that would allow us to grow over time. So I would agree, this is probably not the location. I think what, whether we look at building a brand-new facility or if there's some opportunity that arises in the interim, I think what, um, would help staff and then ultimately council make a decision on spending that amount of money would be, what is, what is the need long-term based upon what is a, you know, what's industry standard for space? Um, what do we need from a, um, a, a, a long-term perspective so that, um, if we do go and build a space and we don't build something too small or something too, you know, or overbuild that was, was not our need, that we're, that we're doing it based upon, um, you know, data and, uh, informed decision, um, you know, so, because, you know, quite frankly, I, I know that this space doesn't work, but I can't, I couldn't say like, we absolutely need something that's this size or something that's smaller. And I think that that's where, uh, something like this would, would assist.
I would hate for them to waste any time on trying to make this space work because we already know it doesn't.
And I think we can make that, you know, very clear as part of the RFP. Yeah.
Would, Alex, would, this is my own, would this information at all help, like, if there was grants or Townsend, would it help, like, that we could present it to them and say, listen, we already know that we're maxed out? And would it bolster our position in attempting to get a grant?
I couldn't say it was a hundred percent certainty. I don't think it would hurt. Uh, I think usually when we are going to ask for whether it's a federal earmark or state earmark or a grant, it's much better to be in a position to be sort of ready, right? And so I think if we know, hey, this is what we're, what we need from a monetary amount, what, we already have a building designed, all those sorts of things, then it shows that we've done sort of our prep work and it's not just a pie in the sky vision. So I would say, uh, certainly won't hurt. Yeah.
So there's some value there? Okay. That's all I have.
Alex, do you know how many months it would take a company to get the RFP back to us?
Um, so once we get the RFP developed and we put it out, I would imagine it would be out somewhere between like six weeks and two months, you know, six to eight weeks where we, where we get responses. Um, and then I would probably guess maybe another four to six months for them to, you know, once we select a firm, assuming, you know, we can agree upon a price and, you know, uh, the scope is hammered out, um, I don't think it has to be a, uh, overly lengthy period of time for them to do that work. And we can, we can identify those timelines actually in the request for proposal as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, this project's going to be incredibly expensive. Um, I think that's why we're planning now. And this is part of the conversation that, when I was back in DC, meeting with our members of Congress, this is one of the things we brought up because this is going to be a high, a high-ticket item and it's a definitive need as the city's going to get bigger. As a matter of fact, next week, uh, I'll be meeting again with Congressman Costa and this is going to be another one of our topics is funding for this kind of stuff so that we can make it happen. Because I don't, I don't think anybody's going to disagree that this is an absolute need that we have. Our staff deserves it. They deserve a better place to work and I, I just want staff to know that every council member up here is very much committed to doing what we can to improve your guys' working conditions as much as we can afford, so. With that, do we have any other council discussion? So this is an action item to move forward with the RFP. Entertained motions for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to item seven, council member reports and staff communications. Item seven point one, community service commission?
We haven't met since our last meeting.
Seven point two, public safety committee?
The public safety committee, we met Monday. Chief Dadian was there, giving us a presentation on the body worn cameras and, uh, actually, well, they're both, Chief and Lieutenant Stevens was also there because he's spearheading it for Chief and, uh, they gave us a presentation and the committee voted to allocate ten thousand dollars from the public safety committee towards the body cam and, uh, dash cams.
Awesome. Uh, seven point three, chamber of commerce?
We met on Tuesday and they reported that the car show was very successful. They had the most, um, cars registered that they've ever had, I think it was three hundred fifty-six. Uh, they made a twenty-eight thousand dollar profit, so that was good news. Uh, most of the meeting was really focused on Swedish festival so that you got all of those dates. You have it all in here and everything coming. So we'll see you tomorrow night, starting with pea soup and pancakes. And, um, they're excited and, uh, council member, um, Smith's mom is really heading up all of that, so, thank you for that. That was it.
Seven point four, economic development?
We have not met, but we do have a meeting on May thirty-first.
Seven point five, finance committee?
Um, we met and we discussed the capital improvement and the city hall space needs that we went over tonight. In addition to that, we discussed the animal control service. We got, received an update on animal control services and we are working on finalizing an agreement with, um, the city of Soma on that. And they are, you know, they're, they're honoring, um, our old, our old agreement. So we do have animal control services going on, but the contract is, we're, we're going to be signing a new contract or they're, we're looking at signing a new contract that's going to be again with the, um, new fiscal year.
Is that, is that coming up at our next council meeting? The contract?
Uh, yeah, so the city of Soma, uh, adopted, uh, their version, uh, last, um, Monday and we were going to have it on the ca- the calendar for consideration, uh, tonight, but, um, their staff that would speak to that weren't available tonight, so, uh, it will come before you on June fourth.
Seven point six, planning commission?
Planning commission met last week. Uh, they passed two actions that'll come before us on the city council, uh, on the, uh, city of Kingsburg hu- housing element. One is on sequoia determination will become in front of us and one is on the general plan amendment. Like I said, that's on the, uh, city of Kingsburg housing element. So that'll come in front of us soon, pretty soon. And then also, uh, they passed, uh, an action to, it will come, also come in front of city council for ninety-nine units, uh, senior affordable living units that will come in front of us, probably pretty soon too, in the next month or so. That's all we did, yeah.
Thank you. Seven point seven, South Kings groundwater sustainability committee?
Uh, we did meet on May eighth, um, discussed and approved the budget. Um, it, all the members have paid into the fund, so that was good. And then, um, they did, we did discuss well mitigation, which is, um, which is basically a, a, for lack of a better term, a new, um, I'm, I'm going to call it a wrinkle that, you know, the state is basically saying that, you know, the GSAs would be partially responsible in the event that a well went dry, but there's a lot to that. The cities are in, and the, and the SK GSA is in a great position because most of the wells, there's only six of them and they're within city boundaries. So other GSAs are in, not in that position. So they would have to come up with funds to figure out how to get water to people that their wells were dry. So the cities are in a great position because there's only six of them and most of them can be basically either annexed into the city water, um, system. So, uh, it's not a huge thing for us, but it is, it is a thing in the state. So, uh, just wanted to educate everybody to that. And then, other than that, uh, there was nothing other, no, nothing else pending.
Thank you. Seven point eight, downtown bid?
Uh, we met last, a week ago on Tuesday. They discussed their website, um, still some social media, um, advertising discussion. Uh, they also talked about partnering more with the chamber on their events. Um, they're working really well together, uh, to help each other on the events. They also talked with the chamber, um, president who came to the meeting about developing together an interactive business map of all the chamber businesses along with the business, uh, bid district, uh, to put on both websites. That was it.
Thank you. Seven point nine, council of governments, we have not met. Uh, seven, ten, council member reports?
Kingsburg Healthcare, uh, Kingsburg Healthcare District met, um, last week, uh, on May eighth as well. And so I had to go to the South Kings GSA, so I attended for a short period of time. Fortunately, uh, council member North was there as well. There was nineteen different grant items, um, being presented that evening. And so I had, uh, oh, Chief Benaski and, uh, Chief Dadian were there, gave very, um, excellent presentations. I appreciate you guys getting there and doing that. Um, and then I had to step out, so Laura, if you had anything to add?
It was great listening to all of the, um, people that were coming to ask for their grants to be funded. And I think I counted like seventeen or eighteen were all to do with our kids in our community, whether it was with the school district or sports or, um, special needs playgrounds, things like that. So it was really great, um, to hear that. And I talked to them today and they said that grantees will find out in July if they are awarded or not. And so that will include the, the city awards that we've asked for. I do have two things also.
Okay.
Okay. So two things, um, I'm on the five cities, um, JPA, which is also changing to be called Center Point. And I've talked a little bit about the, like, food trail that they're starting. I've talked about it just a couple of times throughout the two years. So the actual kickoff is this Saturday. So Alex and Jillene, um, have really done a lot of work in partnering with them. And so they will be in our town, the date they picked for, I think I had shared that they're going to have influencers, they hired social media influencers to come through some of these restaurants that we have picked throughout, um, each different city. So the date they picked for all these influencers to come is Saturday, which is also Swedish festival. And so they're going to be coming to two of our restaurants and, um, I think that Jillene has prepared like little swag bags and things like that for them. Uh, the restaurants are ready to host them. I forgot what time it's at.
One thirty.
One thirty? One thirty, I think it's, because sorrow's in Roadhouse and they're going to like fit in some other things from other restaurants there too. And so that's exciting to see it finally come to life. That's the first thing. The second thing is on Friday night, I, um, I attended a K nine demo dinner and awards ceremony in Clovis, which spanned three counties. So it was Fresno, Tulare and Kings County. It was really nice to see all the different agencies there and they did a demo and it was just really nice to see everything that, um, everybody was doing together. And there were probably about twelve to fifteen elected officials, including, um, congressmen, senators, assembly, mayors, other city councils. So next year I'm going to invite you all.
Stacy, have any?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So I was at the, not a ribbon cutting for the mural at Pelican, but the unveiling of the mural at Pelican. Beautiful mural there, if you get a chance to stop by and see it. The other one is, um, I've been working with, um, Holly and Daniel on the, with a group that's come in to assess our pedestrian and bike safety. And on Monday, May twentieth, there's going to be- And on Monday, May twentieth, there's going to be a, a training session, a, a, a meeting. It'll be at three o'clock, from three to six thirty, at the Senior Center. And this is an opportunity to come and share your concerns about walking and biking in the community. It's been real interesting seeing some of the data they have on pedestrian and bike, bicycle accidents in the downtown corridor. That was, that's been, that's been very interesting. So be sure and come, come join us. That's Monday, May twentieth.
Okay, what I have is, I got an email from Scott Hodges, the Kingsburg High Athletic Director, and I just wanna congratulate the Kingsburg High School's spring sports programs. The varsity baseball were league champions, and then they won their first playoff game last night. They play Garsus tomorrow night in the playoffs, continuing playoffs. JV baseball was league champions. In softball, the softball varsity was league champions. I'm not sure how they did in the playoffs yesterday, but the JV softball team was league champions. The track team was division-three valley champions for the whole, for the track. Oh, just boys.
Boys, they separated them into boys and girls.
Okay, I thought it was the whole, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Stacy. So the boys were valley, division-three valley champions. And then on the swim, I believe, is it Jonas Huckabee? One of the Huckabee boys for Kingsburg High was like fifth in the state in his, his event. So I'm not sure if our swim was like league or valley champions, but I know that one of our swimmers was a state placer. Yeah, so the spring sports did very well for Kingsburg High School, so, yeah. That's all I have.
Awesome. All I have is just to remind everybody, Thursday is the pea soup and pancake. Friday is the awards for public safety employees and the Swedish dinner. Saturday is the Dollar Horse Trot, Swedish pancakes, parade, Swedish festival. So just remind people to come on out for all those events this weekend. It's a busy weekend. Have any other council member reports? Okay, we'll move on to seven eleven, city manager's report.
Just real quick, the Draper Street waterline work is set to begin next week, so notices are going out on that. That is night work that will occur, so everything will be open during the day. We've been communicating that with the businesses, and then it'll be in our communications going forward as well. And then because of eighth grade promotion, council moved the first meeting in June. So just a reminder, our first meeting is on Tuesday, the fourth. That'll be our next meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Item eight, future agenda items, we have none listed. Item nine, we're gonna adjourn into closed session for contract, conference with labor negotiations and conference with legal counsel.
So am I. Abby will make sure we remember that we.